Okay. So if we do, our y is multiplied, then how are we gonna get it across to the other side? Divide, so it'd be a 1 over y. And then an x squared dx. Okay, but I know it's an antiderivative because I'm going from a dydx back to a regular y. Okay, integral, integral, what's the integral of 1 over y? ln y is correct. Then my x squared is gonna go to a uh huh, plus c. And then from there, to get rid of the ln, we're gonna e both sides. Which means that I have y equals plus or minus e to the third x cubed. Oh, plus c. Okay, now, little bit of a trick here. Okay, when you look at your answer choices, which one almost looks right? B, right? What's the problem with, now also keep in mind, they didn't give me anything to find this c. So basically, c could be any number. So it says y could be, so it's just saying which of these is in the right like format, basically. What is wrong with the way that b is written? The 7 is supposed to be tucked into the exponent, right? So b is wrong. Okay, when we did this lesson, we talked about that sometimes for the AP test, rather than leaving the plus c up here, do you remember, you can drop it down to the front? Okay, which is kind of a weird rule. But really, it's c to the third x cubed. Now, both of these are correct. Okay, but whichever one you pick to do, you would find your c in that format. So now remembering that my c can move to the front, which one do we want? C is correct. Okay, cuz you have your e to the x cubed over 3, and then our c in this case came out to be a 2. Okay, but your c can go up top, or it can drop down to the front. Okay, and I would think like ln's, that's a rule for ln's as well. Alright, for the next one, go ahead and start it off by separating. So we have dydx is 4x over y. This time, my y starts at the bottom, where's it gonna end up when I get it to the other side? So if it's a divide by y, I'm gonna have to multiply it to the other side. So it'd be ydy. And then 4xdx. Antiderivative from there, y's gonna go back to a what? 1 half y squared. For my 4x, what's the antiderivative? Plus c? And then from there, remember, we're just trying to get that y alone. So if it's got a half in front, I'm gonna times by 2. Remember, technically, you are multiplying the c by 2, but since you don't know what it is, it's not worth keeping track of. So we know that we have y squared is a 4x squared. Plus c, and then square root. Okay, don't forget that when you use a square root, it's a plus or minus in front. Okay? Then from there, the ordered pair that they gave me is this guy. Okay, that means that when I plug in a 2, the final answer should come out to a minus 2. So it'd be negative 2 equals and then we're plugging in a 2 right here. Okay, if they give me a negative y value, what am I choosing from my plus or minus? Oh, thank you. This is a square. Thank you. So my 2 squared here is a 4. 4 times 4 is what? Uh huh. 16 plus c. And then if they both have a negative, you can basically just cross it out on both sides. Because if they both have that negative, you're essentially just timesing by a negative. Okay, then from there, to get rid of the square root, square both sides. The squared and the square root are gonna cross out, or equals 16 plus c. Which means that my c needs to be a what? Negative 12, good, so it'd have to be c. Okay, now, if you care about this little part here, okay, we talked about it at one point. But first, square roots, what is the crap in the square root not allowed to be? What kind of number can you not square root? If you can square root decimals, they don't square root evenly. You can't have a negative. So if you take the middle of this, and you say for the domain, my 4x squared minus 12 has to come out greater than or equal to 0. And you solve it, you would get this. So that's basically just the domain. That for square roots, you can't square root negative crap. So the middle part has to come out greater than 0, then you would add the 12 across. Divide the 4 across. And then you would square root to get what he has, right, or what this answer choice has right there. Okay, but without even remembering that, you can still pick the right answer. Okay? Alright, go ahead and turn the page. Alright, we're gonna do a couple of slope fields. Okay, it is very unlikely that they'll ask you to draw one of these. You're most likely to see these in the multiple choice part of the test. So first thing I notice on my dydx is I'm looking for all of the places that will make it flat. And then all the places that will make it vertical. So remember, you're gonna get 0 slopes when the top equals 0. And you're gonna get undefined or vertical slopes when the bottom equals 0. Okay, so a top equal to 0 is gonna make it flat. Bottom equals 0 is gonna make it vertical, which a lot of times they'll leave those blank. So what is gonna make the top of this 0? If my x is a 0. And is x equal to 0 a column or a row? Think like Koi box, right? X would be this way, it's a column. So I want all flats along this x equals 0 right here. Is a good? I can see my little sticks and they're not flat, right? Okay, for b, same thing, I see my little sticks, they're not flat. Okay, for c, do I have flats all the way through x equals 0? Yes, same for d. And same for e. So all three of those bottom ones are good. Where should my undefined or vertical slopes be? If my y is a 0, and that should be a row or a column. A row. So for y equals 0, that would be all right here. All right here, those both look good. And that one actually looks good, too. Okay, so when you get to this point, you're gonna need to choose a test point that will allow you to eliminate some of your remaining options. So my dydx, let me remind you, is x over y. So let's pick a point where my slopes are not pointed the same direction. So if this is 5, let's pick 1, 1. On graph d, I see my 1, 1 is downhill, and you don't have to be exactly on it, but in that region. Versus this 1, 1 is which way? Uphill. So if I plug in 1 over 1, how should it come out? Positive, which means who's gone out of those 2? D. Okay, my 1, 1 slope. If I'm in this quadrant, it should've come out positive. Okay, now, let's check this one, if I go to about 1, 1, do I see the stick pointing the right way? Yes, okay, so that's a check. Now, let's pick a different point, but we wanna look for a section of the graph where they're not pointed the same way. So let's pick oh, actually, here's another thing, anytime your x and y's are the same, what should they divide to? So like 3 divided by 3, 2 divided by 2, 5 divided by 5, they're always gonna divide to what? 1, so what that means is my diagonal should always have a slope of 1. So if you look at this graph, do you see how everywhere that your x and y are the same, that you're getting that perfect diagonal 1 slope? That means this is your okay? But you just wanna look for those patterns, eliminate the easy ones where the sticks are totally the wrong way, and then look for details from there. Okay, go to your next question. Okay, first thing we wanna look for is our flat spots and our verticals. So for the next one, where are all my flats? Okay, very good, right here. Okay, I see that all of my x equals 0 are gonna give me 0 slopes. So look at your equations, remember, 0 slopes should be on the top. Okay, which unfortunately actually doesn't eliminate anything for us. Sometimes it will, but we didn't get lucky here. Okay, out of the remaining ones, let's pick some test points. So let's start with, this is 3, 2, 1, let's go 1, 1. Which way is the stick pointed at 1, 1? It should be a positive answer. Okay, because I can see on my graph that at 1, 1, it's uphill. So does that eliminate anything? Yes or no? No, they're all gonna come out positive, let's go to negative 1, 1. How does negative 1, 1 come out? It has to come out negative. So let's see if that can help us out here. If I do x over y, that'd be negative 1 over 1, that comes out negative, so a is a check. Let's go to our next one, it's x squared over y squared. So it's negative 1 squared over 1 squared, how would that come out? Positive, which is the wrong way. Okay, for the next one, my x is cubed. My y is regular, so that'd be negative 1 cubed over 1, that does give me a negative. Okay, for my next one, if my x is squared, what's gonna happen to the overall sign? It's gonna turn it positive, which is not what I want. And then for this last one, I see that my x will stay negative, my y will come out positive. So that will be a match. So all three of those are good. Okay, now, looking at the remaining questions, what do I wanna change my y to be for my next test point? I need it to be a negative, here's why. If I have regular y's versus a y squared, that's gonna make a difference. So instead of doing 1, 1, let's do 1 negative 1. Sorry, negative 1, negative 1. And which way is that stick going? It looks like downhill. So if I plug that in here, negative 1 divided by negative 1 gives me a positive, but it's supposed to be pointed which way? Downhill, so that sticks wrong. Okay, and then out of my remaining 2 questions, this would be a negative 1 cubed over a negative 1, that would also come out positive. Which means it has to be e. Where you would have your negative 1 cubed over your negative 1 squared, that one would stay negative divided by a positive. Does that make sense, how to do those? Okay, so look for your easy verticals and horizontals first. Um, alright, let's go to let's go to number 8 on the next page. Or actually, maybe I pick 9 instead. Okay, let's do this one. First thing, it says we have dydx, and we wanna go back to regular f of x, are we doing a derivative or an antiderivative? Anti, and you'll notice that your x's and y's are all squished together, so step number 1 is to do what? Separate, so I see that my y is currently divided. That means to get it across to the other side, I'm gonna do what? So it'll be ydy. And then this would be a negative x over an e to the x squared. And then dx. Integral, integral. For my y side, what's the antiderivative? 1 half y squared. But on this side, what rule are we gonna need to use? U sub, very good, now quotient rules for derivatives, so for antiderivatives, there's no product rule, there's no quotient rule, but u sub is gonna be needed anytime that you have stuff inside a bigger function. Now, I can't use sub this the way that it's written, but if I rewrite it like this, I can. So I want you to think about what I did. I can have my u be inside a fraction, or I can have it inside an e, but I can't have it in both. So if I take my e to the x squared and I pull it up, then all I have to do is turn that exponent negative, and now it's ready for u sub. So identify your u, what would it need to be? Negative x squared, then I'm gonna find my du dx. What's the derivative of negative x squared? 2x times your dx sub, divide that down. So a du over negative 2x should replace where my dx is. So it'll be the integral of negative xe to the u, because remember, I'm replacing my negative x squared back to being a u, and then my dx will be a du over negative 2x. What has to happen in this step if you did it right? The x's have to cancel, what else will cancel though? The negatives. So I'm gonna be left with the integral of e to the u. And then I also have it divided by 2, so I'm just gonna put a half at the front. From there, what is the antiderivative of e to the u? E to the u again. Plus c. And then I'm gonna take my negative x squared and just pop that into my equation. So it's 1 half e to the negative x squared plus c. Okay, from here, that is equal to 1 half y squared. What do we do from here? Multiply by 2. Technically, you're also multiplying the c, but we just don't care. So it's an e to the negative x squared plus c, and then take the square root. Okay, don't forget your plus or minus in front. Okay? Then from there, looking at your answer choices, which is the only one that's set up in the correct formatting? D. Okay, now, could I go back and double check that my c comes out to be a 3? Okay, sure, but if only one answer choice fits your general solution, then you can identify your options from there. Okay, also, what tells me that I was gonna have to pick the positive? Look back at your question, what tells me that? If my f of x has to come out greater than 0, then I know I'd have to have a plus in front of my square root. Okay? Um, alright, I wanna do number 10, and I don't really have a lot of room. But we have dydx is tanx. And they're asking you to find y. Now, if you went through that rule sheet, and you, I, and you memorized them all, there is a rule for this. But probably you didn't, so let's think about, what is tan the same as back in precal? How did we always find tangent? Sin over cosine. So dydx is sinx over cosinex. We're gonna do u sub on that. What do you think we should pick as the u? Cosine, cuz where is it, in the bottom of the fraction? So my u is a cosine. What does that make my du dx? Negative sine. Which means that I'm gonna replace my dx with a du over negative sinex. Okay, let's rewrite our integral. And then actually, I forgot, what do I need to do with this dx, just bump it over here, right? So it should really be dx over here. Alright, we're ready to do our integral. What is the integral of the 1, since there was nothing else over here with respect to y? What would 1 go back to? Y equals okay, and then I'm gonna rewrite this as sinex over my cosine is now a u. And then my dx is now a du over negative sinex. What has to happen in this step? Sine's gotta cross out. What is my integral now? 1 over u, and it has a negative in the front, du. What's the antiderivative of 1 over u? ln u plus c. And then what do I do with the u? Just plug the original u back into that spot. So it'd be negative ln absolute value cosinex plus c. Okay? Yeah. Oh, okay. Um, let's see. Oh, thank you, yes, there was a negative here, that's gonna eliminate that negative there, thank you. Oh, I know why, okay. So, okay, go with your gut, right, this is the only one that looks right, here's why. For ln, it doesn't exist for any of the negatives anyways, and then what am I doing to my cosine? If you're absolute valuing it anyways, then you can't end up with a negative on it anyways. So technically, it is this, but nothing's gonna come out to be negative anyways. Okay? Alright, and then if you look on your rule sheet that I gave you, the integral of tan goes to this always, but I probably wouldn't memorize it, cuz you may not even see it off. Okay? Alright, we're gonna run through one more, go ahead and turn please to the next page. Let's try number 6. Okay, part A. Okay, part A, we want the equation of a tangent line, what are your 2 pieces? Okay, the point is already given to me, but I do also need this slope, so don't forget to label. Okay, dydx, 1 comma 0. And then I'm plugging into the equation that I was given right here. So remember, this is the slope for any point that I want. So I'm gonna plug in 1, 0. So I'm gonna have e to the y is a 0, times 3, 1 squared minus 6 times 1. E to the 0 is a 1. That's gonna come out to be 3 minus 6, which is what? So my slope is a negative 3. Then from there, write your equation, your tangent line, you need a point and a slope. So my point would be y minus 0, negative 3x minus 1. Okay, then from there, it says, write the equation of the tangent line, then use it to approximate f of 1.2. Remember, that just means you're gonna pop this number into that spot. So 1.2 minus 1 is 0.2. And then remember, on the free response, you don't have to do this math, if you think you'll mess it up, just leave it. Okay, so y minus 0 is still y, negative 3 times 0.2. Okay, if you wanted to go the extra step, that's negative 0.6. Okay, but again, if you wanna leave it like that, who cares? You could even leave it like that, honestly, with a 1.2 minus. Um, okay, we're gonna skip to part c, cuz you'd get the most points in part c, and then we'll be done. So dydx equals all your x's and y's are jumbled on the same side, what are you gonna have to do? Separate, where is the e to the y gonna end up when I bring it across to the left side? On the bottom. So my 3x squared minus 6xdx. And a 1 over e to the y here, you can't have this, but we did one of these a couple minutes ago. How can I rewrite this, cuz it can't be an e and on the bottom? Good. So you'll have to take your e and make it an e to the minus y. Okay? Then on your right side, what's the antiderivative there? Okay, divide the 3 with the 3, it's a 1. 3x squared plus c. And then on this side, because it's an e to the minus y, what would you need on it? It's not just e to the y, but you can get e to the y again, it's e to the negative y, so I need to use what? U sub. So your u would be a negative y. Your du dy would be a minus 1. Which essentially means that when you switch that over to u's, you're just gonna end up with an extra negative on it. So it'd be e to the u, du over a minus 1. And then what's the integral of e to the u? E to the u again, which I'm gonna go ahead and switch back to a minus y. Okay? Then from there, let's just get our y alone, and then we don't have time to find the constant. So how do I get rid of this negative in the front? Basically, you're just timesing by negative 1 across, so we'll go plus, minus, plus. Okay, remember, c doesn't change, cuz we didn't know what type of number it was anyways. Okay, what do I do next? ln, so negative y is gonna be the natural log of that. Okay, remember, you do have to group this together when you ln it. And then to get rid of the negative in front of the y, you would just transfer it across to the other side. Okay, then from there, if you wanna find your c, you'd plug in 1 comma 0. So 0 should be the answer when you plug in 1. So that'd be negative 1 plus 3 would be a 2 plus c. Multiply your negative across, your 0 stays the same, how do I get rid of the ln? E, and what's e to the 0 on this side gonna come out to be? 1, so it'd be 1 equals 2 plus c, and then minus your c across. Okay, or minus your 2 across. So your c would be a minus 1. Okay, pull out your sheets. Good job, guys. Okay, don't forget, don't be late, bring a stack, RHS ID, make sure your Chromebook's already discharged, and then you have your uh, Blue Book installed, if you're on a different Hi. Oh. I'll put it on my desk. Unfortunately. Wow. You're done? I'll put it on my desk. Penny, what did I do, buddy? No, I'm gonna get there. Yeah, if you missed one, just grab the packet from the box by the door, and then it'll be Wait, I mean, I'll do it, I just didn't get it. See you later, Matilda. Yeah, bye. Perfect, thank you. Yes. You're turning it? You're doing one more?
Oh wait, oh, I need to turn it in.
Turn it tomorrow. Yeah, I'll put it on my desk. Yes?
The last Can we turn it to after the test?
Yes, that's fine. I won't be here at 7:30.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye, good luck. You just put it right there. Bye, good luck, you can do it. Bye, good luck, you can do it. Yeah. For my surprise, I know it's a fruit snack, and I can't wait. Okay? It's one fruit snack, listen, no one saw this, okay? I have no snacks to share, are you done? Put it right there, on my desk. You talking about the big packet?
Yeah.
Just bring it on Monday. Cuz you have to bring that cat litter back anyways, right? Thanks, Linus. I don't know, he was here, uh, he went down to his advisory, so I don't know if he'll be back. Oh, there he is.